I'll call and order the this meeting of the county council, the city of Honeyberg.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you for those citizens that are here today, for the elected officials that give their time to this, the service of this community. We ask now, we go into this meeting that you may open our hearts and our minds and that decisions that we make here are for the benefit of the citizens of Honeyberg. These things we ask in your son's name.
Amen.
First thing we need is approval of minutes.
Make a motion for a minute.
Got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Approval of claims.
I move to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. First thing you have, we need approval to, for, I guess, to for me to sign probably, the CF1, which is the compliance of statement of benefits for the tax abatement for Wagon Works. If you look at the documents there, there were certain compliance things that they had to meet. One of those is build the building to be able to provide the dock park and a few other items of the community building that's there, as well as that they would hire one employee. I think they actually employed two. So everything, their backup for that is there. We have to be able to file that CF1 to show that we did, that they are in compliance to file with the auditorium.
The only requirement is that they're substantial compliance, but as you can see, they, they met all the milestones that they estimated.
Yeah, we have to do this so many, we have to do so many years in a row going through it.
Yeah.
Ten, ten.
Ten, I can remember. Yeah.
So. So we need a motion to allow. I guess the motion would be to allow people to be able to sign this chief elected official form.
Make that motion, give you the authority to sign that.
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, I'll turn actually this over to Phil.
Yeah, we have an ordinance to consider tonight, a couple of ordinances. The first one is the rezoning of the property known as Poplar Ridge. This rezoning petition was initiated by the landowners, QOZB LLC. I think representatives of the landowners are here tonight and I think who are familiar with the project. It was previously presented, the project was previously presented to the council. It is a proposal to change the zoning from heavy commercial B3 to high-density residential R3. The proposal was heard by the plan commission. A public hearing was conducted. All property owners within the required distance were given actual notice and publication was made in the newspaper of the public hearing. There were no demonstrators or objections and the plan commission has made an affirmative recommendation that the rezoning be permitted. So you have an ordinance before you that would, if you choose to, that would accomplish that rezoning. And by the way, it is consistent with our master plan. High-density residential in that area does not, is not inconsistent with our master plan.
It'll be ordinance 2025-11.
And so then what will be the next steps from here until they can begin construction?
Well, they'll have to have the development plan approved by the planning administrator. And I'm not sure where they are on that, but they're, there's a plat, I think it's also a plat that's being...
We have to go back for a secondary plat.
Second hearing on the plat approval and then also the development plan.
And then is it just the planning commission that approves the plat approval or do we have to check?
The plan commission approves, yeah, it's just the plan commission approves the plat. And the zoning administrator will approve the development plan so long as it complies with the city's requirements of the UDO.
Unlike originally, I think when that was originally platted, it will show some of the physical features such as the drainage and things like that on plats. So that's, that's probably the point of contention right now, so.
Do we?
So you're not really approving the development as it stands. That, yeah, you know, when that plat is approved and they've met all the other requirements in their application, it could be approved.
Do we have something, this is maybe not related, but with our drainage and retention and things like that, do, as a city, do we have something in ordinance that those are maintained or how, who keeps track of them?
Well, yeah, in the past, those were, in the plat, the platting process, those were generally turned over to the city, dedicated to the city for the city to maintain. But with the new UDO, it's determined that the city will no longer accept those for maintenance and it remains the obligation of either the developer or the property owners, the budding property owners, to maintain all the drainage systems. The city has the authority under the plats to go into the, into the drainage systems and do maintenance work if they're not being done, to charge the property owners the cost of that.
Now, our development like this, if there's any excess thing, they will not be accepted in as its condition, so. It's been some concern about what's there, has it been maintained or not. We, we don't have to accept it. That's where we, the plan commission would review, have to review that.
So am I hearing then that the effective date of the new UDO was like several, kind of recent, right?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-one, maybe it was a twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
So any previous projects would be the city's responsibility? Anything from then forward then would be?
All new subdivision's, either the developer, the homeowners association, or the adjoining property owners, one of the three have to continue maintenance of those.
Okay. Yeah, but would you, but we have the authority to step in if it's not done and charge the landowners or whoever, the responsible parties?
That's correct.
So we, do we even have a procedure for inspecting and seeing these?
Yeah, we have very few because most of the ones prior to just a few years ago weren't even designated on the plats.
We have, we have done a couple of them in recent years. There's one next door to me that was revitalized in the last couple of years.
Yeah, there's a couple up on the, I think maybe three up in the northeast.
There was a couple in the northeast that had some cattails and things like that that the city street department did address. I remember that changed that.
Nineteenth Street.
Nineteenth Street that did that.
Side, side addition.
Yeah, just, just south of twenty-second, yeah, north side of the states, the ones on the south edge of it is the other one.
So do we have a designated person to go inspect that or is it, do we call it?
Our street department. Well, they mow them now, so.
Okay. So can I, can I ask Scott a question? Like as a prop, an owner of multiple properties, do your, do your maintenance people have it in their annual list of things that they need to do to inspect these types?
We look, where we know there's problems like on West, our Third Avenue, I know before we know there's storms, there's sort of some fitting clean outs on the south side of Third Avenue. But there's something along the gutter that we'll use someone else to clean those, make sure they're cleaned off before the storm occurs. If it's gonna be a bad storm forecast, stuff like that. If we know there's a problem, usually try to take care of it. I had one at Westwood Jasper, we had that. There's always a problem. It, it came from prior development, developed after me. I couldn't really control anything. I could do is just take care of, try to take care of my, my stuff business. I could make sure my gray zone were clear.
Some things you can do a lot with the rake.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
Yeah. And the, the fall is the worst part when you get all the leaves.
Yeah.
So those we do, you know, and you also have the leak at, at the vet center and. Some of those, you know, we've discussed, maybe we need to set up something that at some point those ought to be dredged, which is very expensive, very, very expensive, more than the cost of building. And that may happen. Right now, we've not seen the need to do that, but we do send out both our waste, both our street department and wastewater department go out and look at those problem areas during the storms. And I know I had, last big storms are actually our wastewater staff was on twenty-four hour call the whole time. We had wanted to plant more traveling that whole weekend where we had heavy rains. Anyway, so that street department hasten us, slept at the street department on some nights of those storms and say, get out and check them at one or two in the morning and see where problem areas are.
It seems like it would kind of make sense to have a list of where all these are so we could kind of annually at least inspect them and see where they are so that if we will have to dredge them, we have maybe a couple of year in advance notice that we can start cleaning.
Yeah. During, during this time of year, we're actually looking at them every week because we're mowing them too.
So, well, I think that's a different issue.
Yeah, and I think depends on how much maintenance you want. We don't have the stormwater department. We probably should have. It's not a rain we have here, but then that becomes another expensive taxpayer's and we have to look at the advantage of it. I think we've done a pretty good job with it. I know first of the year went out and cleared out the Beaver Dams out west of town that Elk Creek feeds into. We have to go out there, four by fours out in that area so we don't tear the farmer's fields and side by sides, I should say, in that area to make sure there's no dams or that need to be dredged and cleaned as much as you can. Get the cattails is a big thing. Keep the cattails out of the ponds and detention areas.
I just would like to have a resource for residents. If there's something that is like they're noticing in their area, it seems like it's like a place that they can go a person to turn to and that we have a list of them to make sure that we are every year checking these so that we can be proactive instead of reactive in some of these situations.
We have a list of them.
Okay.
And currently, the street department does do the maintenance on stormwater detention areas. And so if there is a problem, it's not being addressed, it should be directed to them at Wagon Works.
Okay.
And yeah, we do keep an inventory of all those as well as same as we do an inventory of streets and alleys and everything else. It's actually a requirement when we file for funding to community crossings and some of those, the stormwater plans and our maintenance, having a maintenance plan.
I don't remember if I asked the question. I know it was Jeff or Steve, no, but most commercial partners know where the weaknesses are and they have laid plans with the weaknesses and they know a storm's coming. I had one, my Chestnut Street location, when DMI built that new building over to the south, they rerouted a lot of water down towards me and was watching my road track. So we had to build something around a divert to go to the, just to the south of Wood Preserve and that way going and that way, then come in along Chestnut Street. So then we always blow out the road track.
Yeah, there used to be a lot of, lot of trees along Maple Street where I live and I knew every time of rain, I'd grab my rake and go out to the three inlets that were up and down Maple Street. There were about ten trees that were going to remove from private property there and we don't have that problem anymore.
Yeah.
Three of those were actually in my yard though, but there were several up and down this street.
So we need to make an order, make a motion to adopt?
Yeah, this is a, since this is a voting ordinance, you can adopt it on, after first reading without having to suspend rules. And the reason for that, as you recall, is that it's already been had a public hearing and gone through public notice, so you can adopt it on first reading if you choose.
I'll make a motion to accept the zoning map for Poplar Project, Poplar Ridge Project.
It's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Got a first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bams.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
This next ordinance you have is also a ordinance that's proposing amending the zoning map and it would apply to real estate situated at the intersection of Seventh and Van Buren Streets. It's currently R1 district, that is low-density residential, generally single-family residential. And they would like to, the property owners there have petitioned the plan commission to recommend rezoning that to moderate-density residential so then they can have duplexes, duplexes and maybe, I think it's just duplexes, at that location. I think they're attached as the, is the part, it only affects one parcel number. It's the address of the parcel, seven oh two North Van Buren Street. And it's again at the northwest corner of Seventh Street and Van Buren Street. It also was noticed to the adjoining landowners and notification was published in appropriate newspapers for public hearing. It was heard and no objections and it was recommended to the council for.
We, do we get the, have the privilege of seeing plans for what someone, if we rezone it, what the structure is gonna look like and what the use is gonna?
The plan commission does that. That's their, their job. The plan commission and the zoning administrator did that.
I'm sure he would share it if he wanted. We can always request it.
For the one that we just approved, Poplar Ridge, we do have those pictures downstairs.
You've seen all that.
Yeah, you left it here last time. I was wondering. I looked through my office. We tried to track you down, drew too fast.
You left those last time you were here, so.
Well, thank you for a few times. I thought she used them as a drawing.
I have, I mean, I don't have a problem with rezoning this, but I have a question. Are the apartments gonna face south on Seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Will these belong to you guys?
Yes.
CHRK, is it?
Yeah. Yep.
How many, how many duplexes are going in there?
Ruger Kirstens on behalf of CHRK Rentals LLC. It's four duplexes, eight units. Originally, we had five, but it got tight with the alleyway and there were some concerns with the utilities in there. So we nixed one and put four and spread them out a little bit. And the way that topography on that land, it's a little strange, but to make use of that corner, we're going to be digging that dirt out and pouring basement walls in the back. So there'd be no really backside to these units. It's all going to be walkout to the front and on the sides. So picture them poured walls into a hillside kind of, and then they'll be level with the street with driveways in the front sidewalks, sidewalks to get out to Seventh Street. Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're going to be cutting, go ahead.
It's facing seven?
Correct. But we're also cutting back. There's a big wall there on Van Buren. It limits the visibility. We're cutting that back. So it's gonna improve the visibility on Van, Seventh and Van Buren.
Dick Whitcomb's place? This was the Whitcomb house at one five two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a little tough to see right now. So that's why Brad drew up plans and we're gonna pull that back.
It's definitely an improvement from, from an empty lot.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Red that ugly wall too.
Yeah. It's been there.
Yeah, it's gonna get reduced, but some of that wall.
You're gonna hold some of that on the east side? You're gonna retain some of that wall?
Yes.
But the north, but the, but the south side you're eliminating?
South side, I don't think there is.
About three, four foot.
There's a, yeah, that's all getting wiped out.
Okay.
You're wiping it all out and then rebuilding something new back or are you?
Yeah. No, no, it's gonna be level with the sidewalk, with the slight grade in. So there'd be no, there'd be no retaining wall in the front. We're dropping those all the way down.
With the back of the, or the back of the duplex will service the retaining wall. It's gonna be like a basement wall?
Correct. The first story will be, the first story will be essentially built into the embankment and then the second story will poke out above the grade. So from the backside, the north side looking in, you'll see one story and/or the rear window of the duplex. But there'll be no walkout patios or anything, 'cause that was, the resident lived to the north. That was her question and she was, she seemed happy to know that there was no walkout patios out of the back to disturb her property. So.
Well, and I think if there's, if it's two stories, that will reduce having to have a railing or something or kids getting on the roof.
Yeah.
Big thing. All my friends I've based my houses.
You know, I don't, they'd have to be able to have a very.
Ran around with a rough cramp.
Very.
Yeah, I did.
They have to have a strong, long jump to make it onto this roof.
Yeah.
So I'm just going off of my own memory there, but that seems like that's a lot of dirt that's gonna be moved out of there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That's why we coordinated with the street department and we actually are going to be paying for the mobilization of the asphalt company to come back because with all the work happening, I didn't want to work off of a brand-new street and damage the city street right away. So I felt like it was a very reasonable thing.
Yeah, our paper was ready to roll. They wanted to hurry to get that, that job done and Ruger had concerns that they were gonna tear up the new street that we just had put in. So we did talk to the contractor. There was gonna be a possibility of mobilization fee if they had to wait till after this construction and Ruger is concerned that there is want to cover that cost.
Correct. And let alone the street cuts, 'cause we're gonna have to make several street cuts and it, it's a shame whenever you go in and cut a brand-new street after it's put in, so.
Tell us about it.
Yeah.
So it is a community crossings project that was scheduled for there. It's gonna have a little, few months of delay because of this construction.
Thanks, good deal.
Thank you.
Two thousand, two thousand twenty-five twelve.
Make a motion to approve two thousand twenty-five twelve.
I'll second. Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bams.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
I did, as far as the pass, I didn't know. I just figured I would drop these off to everybody. Sorry, that's kinda long. Just in case you want more.
Thank you.
You know what you voted on?
Well, I didn't know it was gonna look like this.
I already had it all printed, so I figured I would just hand these out before.
This is all information that's been presented in previous meetings.
He went to your place and printed it.
Yeah.
Any members of the press that would like a copy, I'll have mine up here available for you. Next, next on the list, this is National Police Week. I was at the police station yesterday, Andrea Pratt.
Thank you.
We're there to be able to thank the police officers at the ship change providing dinner and we've got some other things going this week. As part of that, but did wanna put this proclamation into record. I think to get it in record, I'd actually have to read it, so if you wanna bear, bear with me as we read this now. From the Honeyberg Office of Mayor proclamation, whereas the United States honors, remembers, commends the officers that have given their lives or have experienced life altering events in the light of duty, protect those around them. And whereas the proclamation was formally signed in nineteen sixty-two by John F. Kennedy, establishing May fifteenth as peace officer Memorial Day on the week in which May fifteen falls within as Police Week. And whereas the city of Honeyberg admires the sacrifice, strength and courage it takes to continually protect the residents, properties and livelihood of our community. And whereas the city of Honeyberg also recognizes the families of, of the officers who sacrificed their time and energy, showing unwavering support for their loved ones on the front line. And whereas the Honeyberg's Police Department diligent commitment to daily services not go unnoticed or unappreciated. Now, therefore, I Neil Alkins, Mayor of Honeyberg, Indiana, do hereby proclaim the week of May twelve, twenty twenty-five, as National Police Week in the city of Honeyberg. And urge the citizens of the city of Honeyberg to observe the week by praying for the protection of law enforcement and by being mindful of the sacrifice law enforcement officers make daily. Tomorrow night, I know some of you are scheduled to, the optimists of Jasper will be doing, at the Hobbie Center, we'll have a recognition dinner for those, but also recognizing those in the area. And I think there were, it doesn't, it isn't limited to voice county. There'd be several counties represented there, several types of law enforcement, whether, from every law enforcement agency in the state, there will be there to be recognized, so. That's all I have there. Last year you did, we did go through the parking recreation ordinance. This is, we got a number for this.
Two thousand twenty-five thirteen.
Really, the only changes that were, were made in this from a year ago is that we did consolidate some things that didn't make sense. An example was the old town hall where you could rent the porch, but not the east room. So we'd have a different person in the east room that was on the porch. And there were also some areas that were, it was cheaper to rent each portion of a park separately as it was renting as the whole park. Anyway, there were, there were just some discrepancies and confusion in the way it was. Some of that got cleaned up. There is really no raising of the fees and for the summer programs will stay the same. That worked last year and it'll work this year. I think we, we have very reasonable fees for the youth and try to keep them that way. So we would. This has gone through, actually through three different park board meetings and was approved during the last park board meeting. So this we have to introduce, system.
First, the number of ordinance, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five thirteen. Ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, establishing scheduled fees for use of services and facilities of the Park and Recreation Department of the city.
Motion to introduce.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a, sorry, motion to first and a second to introduce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If you choose, you can suspend rules tonight and consider it same night it's introduced with unanimous approval. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
We got a first and a second to suspend rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Motion to adopt will be in order.
I'll submit.
Steve made motion to adopt, I'll second.
We got a first and a second to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bams.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
Can we backstep and get those other two ordinances tonight too?
Those, you don't have to because they're zoning ordinances. The zoning ordinance is gonna be adopted on, after the first reading.
Okay.
That's what you've done tonight.
Okay.
Before we go on to the next thing, I just wanna say because of the tension that has been brought about with Teen Outback, I feel like I need to say something publicly. And we did send something out on Sunday on our social media page. However, I don't think that decisions like this should be addressed on social media. They need to be in public forums and part of that is here that I just encourage as elected officials that we monitor the situation, that we make sure that we don't, I know some of you, I've been a volunteer, some of you have worked very hard at the Teen Outback, but that the services that are provided at the Teen Outback, we don't lose those for our youth. And want to continue to, to ensure that we continually monitor the situation and make, see if there's any contribution the city has to, for our youth going forward, whatever that happens to be.
So we, how are we associated with the Teen Outback program?
How are we associated?
Yes.
We had no contract.
We, we, actually, we, we lease, the city of Honeyberg leases the Teen Outback building from the Southwest West County School Corporation.
Okay.
And then we turn out, we sublease it to the Honeyberg Youth Canteen Inc., which is, does business as, also known as Teen Outback.
And the.
And that lease expires twenty twenty-eight, I think.
And we also provide a stipend, so to speak, for, for their utilities. I think that's at twenty thousand a year, I believe.
Yes.
So if, if they spend seventeen thousand on utilities, they actually get a three thousand dollar check. If they spend twenty-three, they owe us three thousand is, is how it works, so. But it is a twenty thousand dollar credit towards the utilities.
So my thinking was if we have, if we're the lease holders, we should have some skin in the game. Is that what you're trying, would that be fair to say?
Until twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, clearly I was the president of that board. I was on the board for many, many, many years. My kids went there as children and I got on the board then and stayed on the board for many years after they were not going to the Teen Outback anymore. So I have a, a particular love for that property. I've spent a lot of time there. Um, so I have a, a particular love for that property. I've spent a lot of time there, a lot of, a lot of events, recruited a lot of volunteers over the years. Um, I donate money to the property or to the facility, to the, to the Teen Outback organization. And so I'm gonna speak for me personally, that I would like to see and will do whatever I can in my power as an individual to make sure that their programming continues. The kids love that place, as the Facebook and social media posts, um, kind of confirm. And, uh, the parents, with, there's a lot of the adults that grew up going to the Teen Outback, and their kids are now going, and so I think that's probably why the outcry was so swift when word was out that demolishing that property was on the table, that that was being considered, and, um, I, I personally hope that any decision makers going forward have, have noticed how much the people of this county and specifically of Honeyburg, uh, how much they value that property, um, and how much they value the, the work that the Teen Outback Board does, um, and acknowledging the hundreds of kids that go through those doors every, every week, every month. Um, there's, unless there was a a proper replacement, um, there will likely be a lot of angst over losing a property like that, losing a, losing programming, and and so I don't know what our official capacity is as a council, outside of exploring maybe how the lease puts us involved, but, um, I know we have very powerful voices as a council, and, um, and that might be the most valuable thing we bring to the, to the discussion is, um, and I'm, I'm, I know where my feelings are. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but, um, but it's, um, it's certainly, um, probably the biggest issue going on in Honeyburg right now. And, um, and so I, I, do you agree, Mayor, that we need to keep our eye on that?
Yeah.
We need to be aware.
And likewise, I've not been a big volunteer, but I have been involved, uh, uh, donated money on annual basis over the past few years there, too. Especially, uh, you know, when Young Life was, was, was a new, I was involved in that, and then Teen Outback was the one that provided us an opportunity to bring our youth there and have our Sunday night meetings for the, for the board, you know, as we formed that, we're putting things through, so. It's not just, um, the programming that's there. Well, our summer park program also relies on, on that facility to, for our summer park program.
And the library, when the library is being renovated, the Teen Outback stepped up and, um, they now have their summer programs there, and they have their, um, even a lot of school corporation programs are there because there's not space other places. So I think the building is utilized way more than just one or two dances a month, and I think that, um, I am currently on the board of the Teen Outback, and I just, I encourage anyone who wants to see the facility to tour it, because it does offer a lot for the kids, and I think it's so important to get kids off of their phone, talking to each other, in, like, interacting with each other personally, face-to-face, not just, um, on their phones or through video games or whatever, so I, I strongly support the Teen Outback and their cause.
Well, the, you know, the, one of the answers is, of course, we're, the, the school corporation is contractually obligated to, to lease that property till twenty twenty-eight, and so I, I just think that if they either have a personal, uh, uh, position, or as a council, we have a position, I think you need to make it known to the school, school board members that what your concerns are, make it known, that, because they, they own the building. It's their call.
I remember the stellar application of the video, I think I sent to all you guys, when Jeff explained what the Teen Outback did for the city of Honeyburg and for the community, and possibly that was part of the, the grant process of the stellar was, cuz we had the, the tight, tightness of the families and the kids. You know, I didn't have place many times. My kid's been through it. I've been through it, as the other facility before then, uh, I just hate to sit leave. And my interpretation of what I've been reading on Facebook from both sides is if they get rid of a nine to ten thousand square foot facility, and and the new facility will only have a thousand square feet, it's not gonna be anywhere close to where it was in the past. You know, if, I hope I'm wrong on that, but I think, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere close to the square footage and what they could use with the, with the new part of the building. So that being said, I, I, I echo what you guys say, too. I just would hate to see it's gone.
They've had a, they just had a big part of our, they played a big part in our community for a lot of years. I, I can speak, and Tim knows where I'm coming from. Um, Friends of Raider Softball was formed, now, uh, this'll connect in just a second, but Friends of Raider Softball was formed to, to raise awareness and raise money for why the city needed, of the, the school needed its own softball complex, and a lot of the money that we raised to build the field took place, happened at the Teen Outback. They have a, a unique facility, lots of parking. They had, um, access to water and, and indoors in case it rained, and we had thousands of pork chops that we sold over a period of twenty-some years out of that facility, and they never charged us to use it, and all of that money was, that we raised went into building the field, and then another hundred thousand after the field was built that was raised at that facility, not all at that facility, but that was raised partly at that facility to fund an endowment at the community foundation that now supports the softball program for, till the end of time, and, um, and, and, you know, that's just one function that took place at the Teen Outback. Um, they, they raise their own money. The school doesn't put any mon, they, respectfully, they do take care of the grass, uh, which is a big deal for the Teen Outback. But, um, they don't donate to the facility. They don't, um, take care of any of the building maintenance. The Teen Outback raises that money themselves in donations, and, and, uh, used to many years ago. They charged kids to come in, and I understand that, that you don't even do that anymore, and so there's just been, there's, they've been so generous to our community for so long, and that's why, again, I think the, the outcry was so swift and, and fierce about people defending the Teen Outback and what they do. I'm just, that's just one example with what Friends of Raider Softball did there, but there's churches that meet there, and there's, there's nonprofits, as you guys have just addressed, and, and, but anyway, just the, the fabric, the, the fabric of a Honeyburg is, is really
woven.
woven from that. I mean, it's so visible, first of all. It's right there in the middle of town, the most heavily traveled intersection in the county, I've heard, and, and it's right there for people to see. It's easy for people to go by there and see the activities that are going on, and, you know, it just, again, people, people love that that's there, and, and so it would be a hard sell to, to convince me and many other people that it doesn't need, it's not needed anymore. So.
Or the, the trade-off. It would be worth it.
Yeah.
Of the new, um, proposed facility. I, I think that it would, I think it would be a huge step backwards for our community and our youth.
Well, I wanted to provide you all, uh, I knew you were passionate, we were all passionate about it, so I wanted to provide that opportunity today. Open forum, where we have, uh, some of the press members here that, that are taking note, I think, of what was said here today. You know, I, I, you know, I, I look at it, and my wife and I spoke to her, you know, I said, well, you know, i- it's a building, right? I mean, it is a building, and but there's so many things that happen within those walls, and outside of those walls, uh, the lawn is very, uh, is very well utilized for those events, but it's, it's more of what grew out of that building, uh, versus the building itself, so. Let's, let's, let's not lose that, that programming and that opportunity for youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have City Attorney Phil Schneider.
I just have one item. For, uh, those of you who don't know, Taylor O'Brien. Taylor is a, a young lawyer in my office. He's an associate attorney. He's been practicing for a little, just a little under two years, and, uh, just wanna introduce her to you all.
Hi.
We were all nervously waiting about, I'm trying to figure out why you were here.
What were you gonna spring at us?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for being here.
Very much a rookie mistake.
First creature, Thomas Stifel.
I have nothing.
We have any other citizen items? How about council items?
Yes, can you give an update for the people for First Street? I've been getting calls on that, so if we can get that publicly.
Yeah, uh, First Street, uh, the, the original design of, of First Street, uh, with the construction was to, uh, put there, all the utility work was gonna be done in that center lane. Of course, the north lane is not really a lane of traffic, kind of is, but it's, it is a, a concrete culvert, really, it's what that, the north end of. But it was all gonna be contained now with the amount of work, um, that was done, and some of it damaged the south, the south portion of that lane, uh, and versus just going ahead and doing what was in our contract and repaving the center and leaving that, I wasn't comfortable with. It also counted in the original plan for that to be asphalt. There's no way that you can put asphalt on that street with the conditions that are there. You have total of about seventeen ish, inches, and right now the concrete that's there, there voids under it, uh, where that soil is, so, uh, we do have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grant money that we have not spent, uh, so we can send the grant money back, or we can just do the whole street. Uh, so we've had, so we've gone back and asked the engineers to give us a price, as well as work with the, uh, existing contractors, because they do have a contract to pay them, so we, we would have to actually change the contract totally, so, um, at that point, we would get Phil involved, I'm sure, but, uh, there are some things we have to go through from the federal end, both, uh, because that, those are federal funds. We have to get their approval to be able to use those, the contingency money to do that. Don't see that as an issue, uh, but it's just been slow getting that response from them. Uh, luckily, Tom and I talked, we are getting good responses on payments. It looks like we're getting paid, uh, frequently, and that was a concern of ours with, with the cutbacks in the federal government now, but, so we're hoping that we can get an answer pretty soon. Uh, we do have to re-engineer. Those drawings are done, so we'll go back to the whole thing with fresh concrete. It'll be a smooth street. It's a painted rear right now, uh, but, uh, we won't have a set of railroad tracks in the next thirty years on that, on that south end of that lane. It'll be as smooth as the center.
And we still have work to do from Jackson to two thirty-one, I believe, right?
Yeah, Jackson two thirty-one, that's a separate project, but we'll, uh, we'll be doing some, uh, water line replacements, some sewer, uh, excuse me, storm sewer replacement and sewer replacement there, uh, through that and repaving from Jackson, uh, back out to two thirty-one, that's to, to More For Less, and, and probably some curb work down there, there, too, cuz of, More For Less may be changing something with their entrances, and, uh, not sure yet where they're going with that, but, uh, we'll, I'll time that together, so everything's done at once. It's, it's a little rough. It's, it's, uh, uh, but we also looked at, so I brought all of our utilities together, and we looked at what was underneath there. Said now's the time to go ahead and upgrade that, replace it, and, and, uh, go ahead and repave that section, too, while we're at it. That will be asphalt. That's what's there now. It's about almost forty years old, that asphalt right there.
Considering the.
It looks forty years old right now.
Yeah. Considering the traffic on First Street, I know everybody's aware of that, but, um, and the upcoming events that take place on, in the park during the summer, is, is there any, any way to estimate? I mean, will this be done by the end of the year? Will it be done by the end of the summer?
It'll be, it'll be done. Well, yeah, it has to be done by the, by the end of the year, obviously, uh, but it, we're hoping it'll be done this, this summer.
Is there anything temporarily that could be done about the dust with the traffic that's driving on that now gravel road?
Uh, we, we hope it keeps raining. If we, if we get, if we get into, we talked about oil and all that, but that's gonna cause us to dig out even more and raise the cost, cuz we'll have to remove all, everything back, uh, that's underneath that. So it is, uh, yeah, I lived on a county road growing up. I know, I know the, the, well, we had issues with us there, but , uh, hopefully we can get started on that. I, I would expect in June that we can roll with it. Uh, prob, we would've been starting by now if we hadn't decided to do the south, south end. Cuz contractor wants to get out of there, too.
Yeah.
Cuz they're, they're only getting paid a certain amount for that center area. The cost of concrete's going up, and they're gonna be responsible for taking care of that.
Get that done.
Uh, yeah, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's a, also, you know, we spent a couple of hundred thousand dollars doing the center lane and had the southbound lane be like a railroad track and rough. Wasn't a good, good condition either, so. Uh, either way, it was, we had no good answer to that, you know, I mean, it's, it is what it is, and at least we know that for the next, hopefully forty years or so, we'll have a nice, smooth concrete down through there. It was concrete to begin with for a reason, why it was in the specs, the asphalt. We don't know. That was poor my time, so I don't know.
Okay.
Well, that's good. Water your rocks. That's the message. Water the rocks in front of your, your street.
We do have a water truck. We, we, we have, we've all looked at, we're utilizing that water truck a lot right now, so we'll see. Watering plants around the city and everything else.
Well, it's exciting. There's hope at the end of the.
There is hope at the end of it.
It'd be worth it.
Uh, it has increased traffic on First Avenue, because people.
That's all.
Yeah, it has.
Steve can attest to that.
That's the way I'm going, though. I don't even go down First Street anymore.
I don't either. It's amazing how your routes change, but it's, you get to see new parts of the city, so there you go. It's exciting.
Let's just, let's just say, uh, two weeks from now, uh, at our next meeting, we will have, we will have a calendar and be able to get firm dates by that time. That's how close we are.
Okay. Good.
Just in time for bomber season.
You guys.
All right, uh, any other council items? Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to adjourn.
We got a first and a second here from, uh.
Pam and Tim.
Pam and Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Thank you.